I am reconvening the regularly scheduled meeting of the LSU Board of Supervisors. We were in recent since yesterday afternoon. Ms. Griffin, or Ms. Mrs. Marilyn, would you please call the role?
Mrs. Starne?
Here.
Ms. Jones? Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Dampf? Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Ms. Aaronson?
Here.
Mr. Blossman? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Morrow? Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Duschler?
Here.
Chairman, there's a call.
Thank you, Ms. Marilyn. Yesterday, we had committee reports, and one of the committee reports was the Finance Committee where LSU First was set to give a presentation. I understand that we are prepared with that presentation this morning. Ms. Lewis, would you please read that out?
Thank you. Good morning, Board members and Mr. Chairman. Clay Jones with the Vice President for Human Resources is here, and he is prepared to give that presentation on the annual report from LSU First. He's also joined by Chantel Baker in case additional information is needed. Mr. Jones? Ms. Marilyn, would you? Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. Thanks for having us here. Pleased to give your annual report of the LSU First plan, which is, some of you may not be that familiar with it, but it is our premier plan, in our opinion, of our employees' recruiting tool. It is very unique to the industry. We're one of the few public schools that run our own plan, and then it's also a self-funded plan. In our opinion, it is by far the best in the SEC. No other plan offers the types of benefits and first-dollar coverage that we do, so we are very proud of this plan. Kimberly asked me to give kind of just an annual summary of the last year of the plan, and so this first slide is an income statement, and you might find it a little bit curious because it's quite interesting, really. If you look at 2020 and see at the bottom, there was a $6.8 million fund balance that we changed, and that unfortunately for the, I guess, general society and population, but good for our health plan, is a COVID issue. So as all of you know, when hospitals were shut down and doctors' offices were not able to see people, we actually ran a $6.8 million positive number in 2020. Our goal is to stay close to even, so we try to set the premiums each year that would be very, very close to even. So that was an extreme anomaly. And then you'll see in 2021, we were back to what we shoot for, which is we lost $1 million to the fund balance, which is, you know, not that big of a deal on a plan this size. Our plan assets, we actually were getting a little bit low prior to the 2020, but the 2020 brought our fund balance up to $40,747,000. That is about where we need it to be, and then, of course, you see the 2021, which I just went over, we lost that $1 million. So our current fund balance at the end of 2021 was $39.6 million, which I know that sounds like a lot of money, but we'll kind of go over in a minute why that's actually a good number. I think you might find this interesting. So some of you may remember, two years ago, we asked you to approve a new pharmacy benefit manager, and at that time, we were attempting to change the methodology and the way that we do our pharmacy. We went to a pass-through plan. It was new for us. It's very innovative and new, kind of in the industry. We had told the board at the time, we thought we could save $6 million on the plan in 2021 if we were able to put this plan into action. We're very proud that we were actually able to save $8.3 million to our plan. And just keep in mind, again, we're self-funded, which means LSU and a combination of our employees pay the premiums, and that falls in about a 75% to LSU and about a 25% to the employees' premiums. So by us saving $8 million on the pharmacy plan in 2021, we saved $6 million to the LSU budget, and we saved about $2 million to employees not having to move their premiums up as much. And also, I mean, I think it's worth noting on top of all of that is, this is in a time when, you know, certainly pharmacy drugs are going up and inflation is in play, so $8.3 million to me was just phenomenal and huge for us to be able to get that kind of number. And then this comes back to the fund balance and what I was telling you a few minutes ago, that we, a few seconds ago, that we have a fund balance of about $39 million, and that sounds like a lot, but you want to have three months of expenses in your fund balance, and that's just in case, you know, something were to go awry, or you would have a lot of expenses at one time. So we are right at the $3 million, I mean, the three-month expenses, and that yellow line, when you see it dipping down, that is pre-2020, which the plan was getting a little, a little bit, struggling a little bit. And then the 2020, again, unfortunate for many reasons, but good for our plan. We had the $6 million to the bottom line, and so that brought us up, and now we're right back at about a three, three months of reserves at $40 million. So we're in good shape with regards to the fund balance. If we can just keep coming around, breaking even, that's where we want to be. And I thought it might be interesting, just to show you the impact, in 2021, we spent $4.5 million on COVID-related issues. It's broken out on the left side in a little bit more granular detail, but hopefully, we will not see this type of expense, you know, on the plan this year, you know, unless something really changes dramatically. But that kind of gives you a breakdown. I'm not going to go over every single number, but we had $1.82 million of inpatient treatment. That was a big number. And then the vaccine cost is really not as big as you expect because a lot of that was paid for by others and subsidized, so it's actually a lower number, even though it was a lot. We are concerned a little bit about our enrollment. Again, I'm not sure how much of this you understand, but LSU First is a separate plan. The state of Louisiana, the Office of Group Benefits, which is usually referred to as OGB, operates a bunch of other plans, which our employees are also eligible to take, and we have seen a little bit of a decline in our numbers, and we've dug into the numbers pretty hard, and basically, we know that particularly young and healthy people, there's some plans that OGB offers that are high-deductible-type plans that a lot of our people gravitate towards. Can't say that I blame them, but it does hurt our numbers, which we've seen a steady loss of some numbers in our plan, so we kind of took a little bit of a look at that, and these numbers reflect that, and then this chart's actually easier to see. But you'll see that we have had a steady decline. We think we've kind of leveled out some now, and we're trying to continue to be innovative, but as we offer a rich benefit program, it's hard to keep the premiums, there's no way we can keep the premiums at the level of some of those AGB plans. We're just not in competition with them. So we will, we will lose some of our younger, healthier employees to those plans at times. And then we just wanted to let you know, we implemented something new that we're also very proud of this year, which was a wellness credit. A lot of plans do this. We had not done this before. OGB has done it a little bit. We, ours was a little bit stronger than theirs, but we were shooting for a 25% participation rate, and we actually got 32%. So again, we overshot what our actuaries told us we probably would get, so we're proud of that. Employees had to go and get blood work and have a visit with a primary care physician, and if they did that, then we gave them a $25 per month credit or $300 per year, and we know that will pay off, even though that's a little bit money upfront. We know that'll pay off on the plan on the back end, so that's the logic behind that.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
How, I'm looking at this slide. Is the number enrolled larger than the number qualified?
That's the number of people qualified for the one-year credit.
It's, so like 18, 15, 8, 69 is the number of people on the A&amp;M campus that went through the process and got certified to have the credit. 38, 12 is the total number of people on the A&amp;M campus in the plan. So 41% of the A&amp;M employees did what they needed to do. So the second column will generally be larger than the first column. And this is our last slide before we have any questions, if you have any, but this just, I'm not going to go over this, but you would be familiar with the first one under Plan Year 2022. We brought that to you last year to re-up our third-party administrator, and then down in 2021 is where the pharmacy comes in, and all the others are ancillary things that we've done in the last couple of years, but those don't typically rise to the level of the board oversight. So that's a summary of our plan from last year.
Thank you, sir, and I have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
We talked about the pharmaceutical benefits contract and the actual savings versus the expected savings. That year, first year of that contract was during, period during the COVID pandemic? Are the numbers that are reflected in the savings here, how do they interact with the fact that we were experienced to stay home, COVID year, pandemic-level response to whatever the pharmaceutical thing is? And do you think that we could rely on those numbers and extrapolate further that the savings will continue that way, or do you think that COVID didn't affect those numbers? Or what are your thoughts?
Okay, yeah, that's a great question. There is the possibility that those numbers are somewhat impacted by COVID, but generally speaking, most people did not, and, you know, we talked to national actuaries and things, most people did not necessarily stop taking drugs. The savings, and we've looked at, our total drug spend, dispensment was close to the same. To further make us feel better, we, this is, of course, through 2021, December 2021, we already have data for the first five months of this year, and we are tracking the same. So now that we're kind of getting back to normal, we are still seeing those savings. The biggest key, and I think there's been some periodic, I haven't brought them to you, but I think we've given information that's been brought to you, one of the biggest things we have is, we get a phenomenal number of people to do generic drugs, and it's, I think, our plan design helps that, but, you know, we also try to educate our employees, and that's a big saver for us.
Good, thank you. Chair, Chairman, Mr. Morris?
I was going to point out to the board and to Ms. Jones that, starting this calendar year that we're currently getting ready to go into, so it'll be 2023, the federal government has passed more stringent requirements for the pharmaceutical industry to give more rebates starting in January. So look for that in the future, it will help us even more since we're self-insured. So they've tightened down on the insurance industry to give them more rebate to the providers.
And that definitely should help our plan because we're in this pass-through model where we have to get all rebates versus our old model. We did not necessarily get our hands on all the rebates.
So thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Morris. Yesterday, we heard a presentation from Pennington about Metamor and the bariatric surgery, of which I'm a patient. When you and I spoke about bariatric surgery a year ago, we talked about how Louisiana, LSU First covered those procedures. Do you have information on how many surgeries this past year LSU First has covered?
Chantel, do you know the exact number? Chantel, look for the number, but I will tell you, Mr. Chairman, we have, since I met with you, we've done some of the things that you asked us to do. We took the, I know you had an issue with the word pilot on the program. We've taken the word pilot off the program. We are in the final stages of trying to negotiate with Our Lady of the Lake to get them to start taking, allowing us to do the surgeries there. All we're waiting for is their proposal, so we've done that as well after meeting with you, and we also hope to expand it to, we have our third-party administrator that negotiates contracts with hospitals, trying to get us aligned to go into the New Orleans and the Shreveport markets so that we can spread out, because one thing that has been a little bit difficult is an employee that's two or three hours from here tries to come to Baton Rouge, and that's difficult to go back and forth with that type of surgery.
So currently, we have about 28 people that are in the program, so they're either going through the pre-process, or they're in the process of having the surgery, or they're in investigative stage to see if that's a choice they actually want to make.
And these are people who are covered under LSU First, and LSU First is going to pay for their surgeries if they're needed?
Correct. So as long as they're in the bariatric program, we will pay for them.
Is that, and that's, is it limited to any facility or surgeon, or is it?
Yes, we have a specific provider that we are contracted with currently. Now, we are working to expand that program into the New Orleans and Shreveport markets, and also to the Lady of the Lake. We are wait, we have a contract in their queue. We're waiting for the contract to come back to us. We're in pre-negotiations with providers in the Shreveport and New Orleans area.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Werner?
Are there no providers available in central Louisiana? Is that why we're not looking at Alexandria? We have, you know, campuses there, employees there, and still traveling to Shreveport, New Orleans, or Baton Rouge is still quite a, I don't know if there's any surgeons in that area.
So, so we, we are, again, as we said a few minutes ago, we had been under a pilot program arrangement, so for three years, we operated as a pilot program trying to test this theory, and I should say that OGB has just started theirs this year, so we were ahead of them from that regard, but we are trying to expand all over the state, so we will look to there. We were trying to get Our Lady of the Lake in next, where we could start having other physicians in the Baton Rouge area, and then we plan to expand to other areas. Shreveport and New Orleans are just the first two targets that we have identified.
Okay, thank you. I just want to be sure we don't leave out, you know, a whole section of the state because it's not just our LSU A and LSU E campuses, but our extension services all across, and we kind of leave in that gap of central Louisiana.
Yes, ma'am. We plan to move it all over the state.
Thank you.
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, Dr. Lewis, in, in, in Shreveport, I know you're with the Med School, the chancellor, and so, but in the partnership, do they provide that type service at our partnership?
Yes, sir, we have somebody that comes over and does some of that work.
Same way in New Orleans?
Yes.
So, so we should be directing our people as much as we can to those two facilities who are already doing it, in Shreveport and New Orleans?
But they have to have a contract with the hospital.
I understand. But I'm saying, and like Shreveport, we should be contracting with our facility up there and same way with you.
Thank you. Please keep us informed about the status of the contracts with several institutions, Our Lady of the Lake, you've mentioned a couple of times, and I've been briefed that that was, that's been some of the holdup, so I'd just like to keep you informed about that.
Yes, sir.
And of course, Shreveport and New Orleans.
Yes, sir.
So thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you all.
The next item is personnel actions, which have been previously provided to the supervisors. Is there a motion to approve personnel actions? Moved by Ms. Jones?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'd like to go over that. Yeah, what do we, what do you, what's the personnel action?
Let's get a motion to approve.
Well, if you, before you approve it, I'm.
We're going to, hold on.
Okay.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Morris. This is a discussion.
Okay, specifically, what personnel actions are approved and at what rate?
Personnel actions are in the packet.
Where, I don't have that.
You have.
Tell me where it's at.
Good, Dr. Drati. Would you present personnel actions?
Well, Mr. Chairman, one of the personal action, personnel actions is Mr. Drati.
Okay. An issue?
Just making sure.
Mr. Mallett has some questions about personnel actions.
Can you read off the personnel actions?
Sorry, Mr. Mallett, I don't have in front of me, but there are three personnel actions today. One is related to the provost, the executive vice president and provost. One is related to myself in a position with the president, and the third is the new board executive. Those are the three.
Do you know the numbers?
They're in the packet. If you give me a moment, I can find it.
I don't have that. We have the packet. I guess they just provide it online, right?
Yes, sir, they're on, yeah. Yes, sir, is there anyone in particular or all of them?
Maybe you're getting ready to vote, I'll just please.
Sure. So for the executive vice president and provost, the salary will be $465,000. For Jason Drati, the salary will be $215,000, and for Ms. Kane, Dr. Kane, it will be $197,638.
How much?
$197,638.
Is the, is the president recommending this?
Yes.
Where's he at?
The, I'm sorry, the last one is.
Point of order, Ms. Kane does not work for the president, so that would not be a position. The president would rec, we can't speak over each other for the record. Ms. Kane does not work for the president, she works for the board, so the president would not be in a position to make a recommendation there.
So how did we determine that amount? Can you pose a question to whoever wants to answer?
Um, I'll, I'll take this. I recommend the hiring of Ms. Kane, and I recommend the salary for the salary of the previous executive director.
What was she making prior, she works for LSU?
Well, that's irrelevant because the salary of the existing direct, executive director is what we use as a baseline.
So for the record, she was making about $97,000, are we giving her $197,000? Is that, is my correct? If that's, if that's the case. What, what is the current position, Mr. Chair? What's his current?
It's exactly what we're proposing to pay.
No, but it would seem that, to me, to go for the morale of this university, somebody who's working at the university making $97,000, gets a raise to $197,000, you're going to hurt morale at this university. Period. Now.
I have a question. Can we cut?
We're gonna.
Chairman, executive session.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. We will, I'll recognize every supervisor, and you'll direct all comments to the chair.
All right. Can I, can I call for an executive session?
I would ask to make a comment before that then, since there were some public comments made.
Sir?
Um, hold on, Mr. Wood DeQueer.
I'm looking at the agenda. These, these items weren't noticed as being for executive session on the agenda, and they would require giving the person 24 hours' notice if you're the discussor in executive session, so you couldn't do it today.
Even though it's discussing, hey?
Compensation is public. You could go into executive session to discuss character or professional competence, but if you're just discussing compensation, that would be fit for public session.
Mr. Williams?
Some time ago, this board commissioned a study on pay equity across the system, and we asked that pay be looked at system-wide because we had received disturbing anecdotal reports that women and members of different ethnic groups were systematically being paid less than their white male counterparts. We challenged the audit committee to go. their white male counterparts. We challenged the audit committee to go and audit the university and, and examine the pay disparity situation that we had been hearing about anecdotally from the faculty and staff of this system. When that report came back, it was shocking to all, everyone on this board, including Mr. Mallett. And the reality that women and members of minority groups were being paid substantially less to do the same jobs that their white male counterparts were doing within this system was atrocious. And this board vowed to fight that. And I think we have systematically, as we've diversified LSU in general, we've been very diligent about making sure that people were paid equally. The suggestion that we would bring in a new executive director, and not pay her based on the position that she's going to be doing, but pay her based on the amount of pay she received in a completely different position, it almost has the feel of, that's too much money for you, or you don't need all of that. And that's the kind of nonsense that we have tried to get away from as a university, as a board, and as a system. And so I, I find it offensive that we would try to bring up an amount of money someone's making in a completely different position, and not honor what we have been paying a very capable, Dr. Drotti has done an extraordinary job for us, extraordinary job for us, and, um, but it would be offensive that we would pay someone, and I would remark, someone of, of a group of people who had been traditionally underpaid at this university, that we would even entertain paying a different salary to that person who has similar, if not identical, qualifications. So I would just ask that we keep in mind all the strides we've made, and not look to irrelevant information, but look to pay people equally based on their qualifications, based on their resume, based on experience, and not based on their gender, or their ethnicity, or any of the other criteria that have held us back at this university for too long. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mallett?
I happen to agree with you to a certain, certain respect to that, James, but.
Mr. Mallett, please address your comments to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Look, I hire people all the time, and everybody else on this board does too. I'm not against her. I think she's capable. I just have a problem that she should go from point to point. Does she deserve a raise? Yes. But at LSU, we have a tendency to give enormous raises just off the, off the cuff. I, I, and I don't agree with that. I would never do that. If I, if I'm advertising for a job and it pays $150,000, and the person comes in for the interview, I'm going to, I'm going to let him come to work for me at a probably lower rate and prove to me that he is capable of it, number one. Now, I'm not against her, and this is not about whether she's woman, or whether she's green, black, or yellow. That's irrelevant to me. It always has been. I'm concerned that this university needs to start watching how we pay people, and maybe we need to relook at how we determine on, on these pays. It is going to, I mean, everybody else sitting at this university that works here, how does it look? I don't think it looks good. I think it's a, I think it's terrible. It's not that she can't earn it. It should be based on performance. You should hire. I think she deserves the position. I think she's capable. But at the same time, start at 120. If she does a good job in a year, you give her, you give, you give raises to get to that position. Has nothing to do, James, with, excuse me, Mr. Chair, it has nothing to do with the fact that she's a woman. This is a man, I don't care what, what it was, I would still be making the same argument. Now, I'm going to disrespectfully disagree with y'all, and y'all go ahead and do what y'all want to do. It's that simple. But I, I can't in good conscience, knowing that some of the other people have been here for many, many years, who have not been given raises, have to see this, because I think it hurts them. I think they feel bad. I think it hurts the morale of the university. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mallett, I think you need to under, Mr. Chair, you need to understand.
Mr. Chair?
Please address your comments to the chair.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mallett needs to understand that.
That's not fair. That's right.
I do this for a living now. All right. No, you don't. I know you think you do. But anyway, let me say, let me say this. Let me say this. And I will, I will rise above what's happening here today. This is not a raise. And again, you can say it's not about gender or race, but here we are in the situation where we find ourselves, all we have to do is pay this woman the same thing her predecessor was making. Not in a raise, not because she's got the same position and we're increasing it. She's taking an entirely new position in an entirely new department, and yet we want to find excuses not to compensate her equally. And it, it's inconsistent with, it speaks of the old way of doing things. It is not the new LSU, and I'm proud to be on a board that values pay equity across the system. And I respect Mr. Mallett's opinion, but I think we need to be mindful that this is not a raise or an increase. We're hiring someone to do it, to do a job.
Ms. Jones?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented.
We are, we have a motion and a second on the floor already.
Zach, call it.
Are you calling for the question?
Yes, I'm calling for the question.
Calling for the question. Um, we have a motion and a second to approve the personnel actions. That is in globa, all three at once?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Marilyn, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Starnes?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Damp? Mr. Armenter?
Yes.
Mr. Aaronson?
Yes.
Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Mallett?
No.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow? Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Temple?
Yes.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mrs. Zuschlaw?
Yes.
Yeah, 13 yays, one opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Marilyn. The next item is approval of minutes from the April 8th, 2022 meeting. This was the public meeting we had in Shreveport. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, motion to approve.
Supervisor Erickson moves to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Supervisor Armentor. Without exception, without objection, the minutes are approved. The next item is opposed to amend bylaws related to terms of officers and the agenda. Also at the April 8th, Shreveport meeting, I put together an ad hoc committee to review bylaws. Is there a recommendation from that committee? No, no recommendation. There will be no action. The next item is reports to the board. With our approval, we have six reports to the board. Are there any questions? Um, I need a motion to approve the reports to the board.
No move. Second.
Approve, uh, motion to approve the reports by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Werner. Without objection, those reports are approved. Next item. The next item is a report from the faculty advisors. Professor Lopez, do you have the report of the faculty advisors?
I do have the report from the council of faculty advisors.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for allowing us to present this report on behalf of our LSU faculty. First on the agenda, or on the report, faculty note that the recent raises approved or included in the legislative budget are intended to be merit-based. And we appreciate that, and request that criteria by which they will be determined be shared with the faculty, and that they are merit-based, indeed merit-based. Faculty also note, on that same note, that annual evaluations are not being performed on all campuses in our system. This is not an acceptable practice and a clear violation of campus policy statements. On the LSU Baton Rouge campus, there are concerns about the Student Advocacy and Accountability Office. There have been several reports of different, um, consequences for the same violation, violations, being distributed among students, and faculty are concerned about this and have requested a meeting with the administrators on that. It has also been brought to the attention of the LSU faculty, LSU Baton Rouge Faculty Senate Executive Committee, that the early childhood education laboratory preschool that serves as a care center for children, as well as an educational resource for the School of Education within the College of Human Sciences and Education, is closed for approximately, or at least, 40 days a year. This is far and above the recognized state and federal holidays, and there are concerns that this may interfere with the educational mission of the laboratory school, as well as a resource for faculty who rely on it for childcare so that they can complete their educational and scholarly missions. The Faculty Senate Executive Committee will be following up with the local administration on that issue as well. Uh, the Faculty Senate, and I think this was already addressed in your report, Chairperson Starnes, we did request an update on the plans to change the Board of Supervi, Board of Supervisors' regulations and bylaws that pertain to faculty. It's my understanding that there were no changes to those, or perhaps not. We understood that there were going to be some changes to the bylaws that related to faculty. All right. Well, I can follow up with that later. Um, recently, or at our last meeting, in the, at our April meeting of the LSU Baton Rouge Faculty Senate, there was a resolution passed, 22-05, increasing laboratory funds, library funds to meet university, research university standards, that recalls for yearly increases to our library budget for things such as subscriptions, collections, and operating budget. Further, the Faculty Council endorses the Staff Senate resolutions, or Staff Senate and Council resolutions for tuition reduction and exemptions for online education to increase access to more of our LSU colleagues. Uh, this will be my last report as the Council of Faculty Advisors' Chair. Dr. Sanjay Kamboj will be taking over in the September meeting, and so I am quite confident that I leave, leave you in confident hands. And on a final and personal note, I'm very grateful for, for the efforts of the Board of Supervisors to reach out to the faculty, everything from holding a red beans and rice soiree at one of our Faculty Senate meetings, to coming to two Faculty Senate meetings at Baton Rouge, to touring our campuses, and just a genuine outreach and collaborative nature. I certainly hope that this relationship will continue into the future. I think it's a very positive change, and I look forward to seeing the same thing for years to come. And that is my report on behalf of our faculty, our LSU faculty.
Thank you, Professor. Ms. Milligan, do you have the staff advisors' report?
Good morning. My name is Tammy Milligan. I am honored to serve as the new LSU Staff Senate President. Some of the other staff senators have in, also chosen new presidents. And so we have Matthew Culpepper from LSU Shreveport, Daniel Manuelle from LSU A, and Ray Zorn from LSU E. LSU Health Science Center in New Orleans has expressed interest in starting a Staff Senator Council, and so we will be reaching out and providing information to them on how to make this happen. In an effort to enhance recruitment and retention of staff, as we see so many leaving higher education, Staff Senate passed Resolution 2201, which calls for the review and elimination of fees for staff who are enrolled in the Tuition Exemption Program. The research that we did shows that unclassified employee participation in the Tuition Exemption Program outnumbers classified employee participation by a margin of 10 to 1, and that employees from underrepresented groups are outnumbered 3 to 1. And this suggests that the increased cost of fees is having a negative impact on participation by classified and minority employees. We are also asking that consideration be given to allowing staff at all of our campuses to participate in this same type program with LSU online. As being a full-time employee, it makes it very difficult sometimes to attend classes in the traditional manner. LSU Staff Senate is also working with the foundation to finalize the process for awarding funds for the newly established LSU Faculty and Staff Career Excellence and Enrichment Award, which will increase professional development and training for all classified and unclassified staff, as well as faculty. And we'd like to thank the President's Office for working with us in establishing the process to begin awarding those funds. Staff appreciation events have been held in the spring at several campuses, and LSU campus in Baton Rouge held a tailgate appreciation event at Alex Box in May. We had more than 200 staff members who attended. Campus Federal Credit Union cooked and served Jean Malaya, and Staff Senate provided T-shirts, desserts, and soft drinks. As staff also enjoyed free tickets to watch LSU take on and defeat Nickel State. And we just want to find other ways that we can show appreciation to retain our staff, and to also show that LSU is one of the best places to work in Louisiana. LSU staff and faculty were honored in May for 25 to 55 years of service at a ceremony, and we are truly appreciative to the President's Office and HRM for bringing this event back after the pandemic. We'd like to congratulate and thank all of our staff and faculty for their years of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milligan. Mr. President?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the Faculty Senate leadership and the staff leadership this year. It was really great to work with you this past academic year. And I greatly admire how you managed through very, very difficult challenges throughout the process, and just wanted to have that duly noted during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And do you have a report, or is that your report?
That would not be my report.
Oh.
Want me to do my reporting? Wonderful. Um, well, I'll go there. First of all, Dr. Lopez, since I've had an extended time, I want to say the same thing I said at the faculty meeting we had earlier, that I thought you did a splendid job this year, under very much duress, to be quite frank. And I really appreciate that. You are an elite academic. I continue to be amazed that someone of your standing would subject themselves to things that I observed. But I really appreciate the fact that you were an outstanding leader through it all. This year, well, almost a year ago when I arrived, I received some insights about what was going to happen to LSU during the legislative session. Mostly what I heard was that we were in trouble, in that there would not be any allocations of substance. One person said we were going to zero you out. So, that said, the team here, I think, did an amazing job around, in three ways, and I would like to acknowledge that. And the three are around alignment of aims and message, discipline, and engagement. With respect to alignment, I thought that the team did a wonderful job of embracing the scholarship-first idea, articulating that into a coherent message, and allowing it to go forward around the big five, or our Pentagon, agricultural, science, biomedical science, in particular the NIH, cancer designation, coastal research, defense, and in particular ROTC and cyber, as well as energy. I want to say in a public forum, many people think that is our strategic plan. That was our messaging for the legislative session. Our strategic plan is ongoing right now. I'll speak more about that later. I thought that the team did a great job in terms of discipline. I would like to acknowledge the system chancellors and their GR teams. I can't look in hindsight at how LSU might have operated in the past. I only heard things. And what I could say this year was that our system chancellors and their GR and their GR teams operate in a disciplined fashion. That does not happen without a leadership. So I want to commend you for executing that plan that we started to articulate at the beginning of the year in a very disciplined fashion. It is a model, in fact, and I hope people take what happened this year as a case in how you do it. And thirdly, engagement, which is extremely important process when you're attempting to appropriate and get appropriations. I would say, and backing up and talking about alignment and discipline, everything that happened related to the legislature was also applied in private philanthropy. And so it was a twofold strategy that was really united, and we took the same techniques, I think, in many respects across the public-private sector. The engagement started with this Board of Supervisors. I want to thank you all for, especially the fall term during what we call football season. That is an extremely important endeavor in dealing with our legislative friends as well as private philanthropy. All year long, Chairman, Mr. Starnes, and Mr. Mallett were investing time, talent, and resources in a way that I thought was quite special, and so I would like to acknowledge that. However, you know, I know you all don't see each other, you know, you see each other at this meeting, but I get to see you all the time. There were many other people who also supported in different ways. My supervisor, Carlos Temple, Supervisor Brown, Supervisor Jones, Supervisor Williams, Zuslog, all, I had legislative people tell me that you were talking to them on our behalf. There may have been others among you that I don't know, but I do know this, that you can't be successful in what we just did without all of you fully engaged in that way. I also appreciated throughout the year when we visited, each of you, when we visited your areas, you had your legislative teams there. So when we went to New Orleans, Mr. Woods, your folks were there. I appreciate that very much, and that's how you do it. It is a collective deal, and so I really appreciate it. I made a huge mistake just today by mentioning names because when you mention names, people feel like you forgot about me. Look, I haven't forgotten about any of you. You all outstand. I really appreciate you, and everything that happened this year on the legislative front, I think, was special. I would also like to acknowledge that the LSU Foundation and its leader, fully engaged, Rob Stewart, with us both on the GR front and on the private philanthropy side, which made this a really wonderful team effort. And in fact, many of the other foundations across our system were fully engaged, so each campus, their foundations, really got involved in both the private and the government activity. I think this is just the beginning of what can happen if we're united in this way, and I want to acknowledge that. Now, the aim of all of this was to get to a point where we have world-class research continuing at scale and growing. I would like to acknowledge one success that's very recent from Pennington Biomedical Center, where they have faculty members who, along with colleagues from Rutgers, Cornell, Cold Harbor Laboratory, secured $25 million to study the mechanisms associated with body weight and muscle mass loss seen in cancer. It is literally called a moonshot funding effort by the Cancer Grand Challenge Fund from the Cancer Research UK and the United States National Cancer Center. The reason I mention the moonshot is because throughout the year, the messaging we had was this is our Sputnik moment. This is our Sputnik moment. And so when you see colleagues who are awarded money like this, it moves us closer to your, I know, passion about NCI designation, and many other of you sharing that, I think we can do some amazing things in a going-forward fashion. I always say all you want is a shot, and I think we have a shot at it to be really, really quite special. I want to also, again, I think yesterday, all the power went out, and maybe it wasn't fully captured, the members of the legislature who helped us, as well as the Governor's Office, who was extremely helpful for what happened, but I'd like to say their names again, the Speaker, Clay Schett Snyder, Paige Cortez, the President of the Senate, Speaker Pro Tem Tanner McGee, as well as Chairman Zerang from House Appropriations, Chairman White in the Senate Finance Committee, Senator Milligan, who took us over the top on the AI computing, Senator Sharon Hewitt, who assisted greatly with energy innovation, Capital Outlay Brett Elaine from the Senate Rev. and Fiscal Affairs Committee, Chairman Stuart Bishop of the House and Ways Committee, Franklin Foyle, who is our representative here in securing funding for military science. Very special efforts they made to help us. A tough group, but fair, and I greatly appreciate the support and look forward to really pushing the envelope next year, both in the public and private philanthropy. So I want to thank you all for your support, and I want to thank our team here, the system presidents, as well as the team in UAB. I will say this, I normally don't talk about administrative things at all, but when I arrived here, the GR team was, you know, small, nimble, but I think that Mr. Drydy, who we talked about, Dr. Drydy and Lewis, did a heck of a job, and quite frankly, pulled it out for us in some important ways, and so I'm greatly appreciative of the leadership that was exhibited by that group, as well as all the others who participated and engaged with us. Now, I conclude with that.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll also echo your remarks regarding the Governor's Office, Governor himself, and the legislators who worked so hard to promote LSU and do great things for LSU this legislative session. Very, thank you, sir, for your efforts. I would like to hear from the chancellors now, and start with Dr. Kerwin, and we'll go down the line. Dr. Kerwin, do you have a report?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. I want to say thank you to the board and to the chair for your support, and to President Tate for his support during the legislative session. It's an important element for Pennington in terms of securing support for operations. We did have a relatively good session, and our main push there was to secure funding for new recruits. And so we've been relatively successful, I think, in that endeavor. We have about six new faculty who will be starting this year. All of these folks have funding, and one in particular, I'd like to point out, is a senior professor at UAB, the other UAB, I guess, who is bringing NCI funding to Pennington and to LSU. And again, I think that that's our strategy in terms of building out for this NCI designation. We also received support for a program called Grow Healthy. Grow Healthy is a new initiative that will be pushed out from Pennington this coming year to address obesity in children. It's a childhood obesity initiative geared really around prevention. There are about five programs that are under this umbrella of Grow Healthy. It will impact across the state, and we're partnering with multiple education providers and payers across the state to implement this program. We'll also be partnering with our colleagues in LSU, in the Ag Extension, and at all of the campuses, including UNIS, Alexandria, and Shreveport. In terms of grants, I think the big hit for us this past month was the grant that President Tate acknowledged, this Crook Grant. It's very prestigious, elevates LSU, it elevates Pennington, it elevates our cancer programs. It puts us on a playing field with the elite establishments across the country, indeed across the world. And so it's very significant. I want to acknowledge Steve Hamesfield and Justin Brown, who led that endeavor. We've also been part of a big initiative out of EDA, Economic Development Authority. It's quite a different lane for us. We're usually funded through the National Institutes of Health, but as part of the Build Back Better Initiative, there was a tranche of money allocated for regional development. And Pennington is part of a team that has submitted an application for this. We're partnered with Bio Innovations out of New Orleans and a couple of the other academic institutions, including LSU Health Sciences in New Orleans and Tulane. This was a $100 million application to EDA for funding for infrastructure and for workforce development. We have made it to the final round of that. Decisions will be made in September. The fact that we were able to put such a team together speaks well for the potential for this to, even if this grant does not get funded, it points to the potential for this team to leverage that opportunity to seek other funding, and we have been encouraged to do that primarily through philanthropy, and we've been meeting with a number of philanthropists across the country to try to secure additional funding for that. What that means for this board and for Pennington is that we would be building a new innovation center on the campus. This is a $26 million facility that would support, among other things, our unique super-obesity clinic. This would be a one-of-a-kind clinic that really sets the stage for managing folks who have obesity. We heard yesterday about Metamor. What we didn't hear, unfortunately, Dr. Shaw could not attend, he confirmed for me last night, he was in surgery, but super-obesity is a real phenomenon, folks. These are patients who have weights in excess of 500 pounds, some of them up to 1,000 pounds if you can envision that, and we have an opportunity to really be the center for providing support for those patients. And right now, we have VIPs coming in from all over the world to have surgery here at Pennington, so it was reassuring to me to hear from the LSU first folks that they're planning to expand their program because there's great need, and we have not been able to sit at that table yet. Lots of other things at Pennington, I think, in terms of national and international profiles, I want to acknowledge Leanne Redman, who was on NBC News on Sunday evening, if some of you saw that, promoting our programs in women's health and in childhood obesity. That got enormous coverage in a key segment. And our obesity campaign, which I've talked about frequently here, is going strong. At the end of the first year, we've had 1.45 billion impressions across the country. Indeed, it's gone international, 95 countries signing in, and we are planning to partner with other institutions across the globe on this, and this is part of our major initiative. And with that, thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you, Dr. Kerwin. Dr. Lewis?
Thank you, Chairman Starnes. First of all, I'd like to publicly thank Dr. Tate for coming to Shreveport earlier this week, and I think most of you know that he came and presented a very bold vision for North Louisiana. You know, he stated during, early on in his presidency, that he'd be visiting Shreveport a lot, and I believe he's been up there six or seven times, which is unprecedented. You know, normally, once a year, maybe twice a year in the past, but he's come up there with this bold vision, and, you know, I'm not going to tell you that everybody's on board. I've had to calm some faculty down, but the community as a whole is very engaged. The community leaders are very engaged. Our legislature is very engaged, and we're starting to see, you know, what can happen. And I will say that LSU Health, Shreveport, and LSU S have been working very closely together over the last year, year and a half, and we feel that that is going to continue. It's going to grow, and it will help both campuses. But the ideals that we heard are, in these conferences and in these meetings, will benefit both schools, it'll benefit our community, our state as a whole, and the citizens of our state, and that's ultimately our goal in academic medicine. So, or in higher education. Let me talk about my three areas, academics, research, and clinically, very briefly. First of all, we did have our largest graduating class in May. We're very happy for that. Once again, Dr. Tate came and was our guest speaker for that, and I'm appreciative of that. Our new education and wellness building continues to progress. It was said yesterday, you could tell if a campus is really prospering by the number of cranes. We were very happy to have a crane for the first time in 14 years on our campus, and it's currently about 50% complete at this particular time, and is expected to be completed, hopefully for the fall session of next year, which is critical. And along with that, we're starting to revamp our curriculum, particularly our medical school curriculum, which will be a big undertaking in preparation for that new building. Research continues to prosper. We've added several new researchers, both in the cancer arena as well as other arenas, specifically cardiovascular, and so that area continues to grow, both with grants and with faculty. You know, there's a negative thing that's going on this summer. It's in the clinical realm. I think most of you know that the SNAP nurses will be going away. This is very concerning to us in North Louisiana, and it will require us to close beds, which we are very concerned about in our hospital. It won't just affect us, it actually affects the private entities even more than it does us, but this is a little bit concerning for us, and that begins July the 1st. But overall, things are going very well. Once again, thank you so much, sir, for all of your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Dr. Nelson?
I too. I'd like to thank President Tate and Chairman Starnes for all your hard work to help move us forward. Just in terms of construction, as we pointed out yesterday, the Cowles Building is going to be opened up in, probably in the fall. This is a new faculty building for our clinical faculty. Those of you who happened to visit us in 1542 realize that that structure is over 50 years old, and actually, every time you turn the water pressure on, you have a new waterfall in the building, and so we're very grateful that this will be completed and actually will be probably the best simulation center in the state. Also, in terms of the MBB renovation, which you heard about yesterday, that's a $60 million project. That's going to renovate the laboratories on three of our floors, which haven't been renovated for, again, between 30 and 40 years, where I have NIH-funded investigators have tarps in their ceiling collecting leaks from the roof that drain into their sinks. So this is welcome. These two projects by themselves are over $100 million. The next project, which we really need to address, is the dental school, and it's the only dental school in the state of Louisiana. It needs a lot of basic infrastructure improvement. For the first time in our history, Children's Hospital's been identified as two of outstanding programs, and US News and World Report, both are programs in GI and urology, and this is the first time, and many more to come. Children's Hospital has undergone a $300 million renovation in terms of its infrastructure, and opened their pocketbooks, and now we're able to recruit world-class talent in terms of these chair positions, and this is just the beginning. Many of you probably heard, several months ago, I signed an agreement with Xavier Hospital that we're opening and starting an early admission program, and so what will happen is that those students who achieve a certain level of academic performance after their sophomore year will apply to medical school in New Orleans, will be interviewed, and pending that interview will be accepted, and as long as they maintain their grades for the next two years, they are guaranteed admission to the school. So in addition to that, we guaranteed that we give two full rides for the whole four years, and again, as long as they maintain their academic performance. I actually discussed this program with Secretary Phillips, Courtney Phillips of DHH, and she was very enamored with this idea, and so she's committing $1.6 million to additional scholarships, which... which will fund 10 full rides for four years for Xavier students. And to us, this is just the start. We're going to have conversations with both Dillard and Suno and open this program to them as well. We have active searches going on for the Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs and the Dean of School of Dentistry. These are in their final stages. We hope to have both positions secured by the end of this month, or the first two weeks in July, as well as true for the Chair of Surgery. We're just about signing the papers. This is a very distinguished cancer surgeon from the University of Arizona, which will help us a great deal in terms of our NCI efforts. I was unable to attend your dinner last night in the engineering building because I had a phone call with SACS, which is the accrediting agency, at 7:00 last night. I was a bit concerned because in the letter I received, it said it wanted to speak to me before there was public disclosure. But actually, I hope they do disclose it because we got a great report. There's only one minor question that they had, and that had to do with the School of Dentistry and the fact that we had many interims. And I said that would be probably, again, resolved within the next few weeks. So that went incredibly well. In terms of NCI and moonshot, again, Dr. Ochoa, one of our faculty, was recognized as one of the members of the Moonshot Committee, and one of his articles is one of the top 10 articles in cancer research in the past decade. One last thing is that, you know, unfortunately, in New Orleans, we suffer a lot with trauma, gunshot, and burn. We have some of the best burn surgeons and trauma surgeons in the state. And so I reached now to Senators Cassidy and Kennedy years ago about working with DOD to try to get funding to take physician, military physicians from other parts of the country to come to New Orleans for their training, to maintain their skills in trauma and in burns. And actually, burn is one of the most common injuries now in warfare. And we just secured $5 million from that for the DOD. And we're pretty fortunate. I think we're going to get another $5 million next year as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Chancellor Correll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and President Tate, also for your support, particularly in helping get the faculty raises. We appreciate that very much. It's something that's critical to the morale of our campus, and it's really helped a lot to them know that we're going to have a second year in a row with raises. Last June, y'all had a board meeting on our campus. And we had the governor there, and we had a groundbreaking. That project is coming to an end. Thank God. It's been a beautiful mess, but they've dug up everything they can dig up on our campus. The drainage is going to be significantly better. The streets are being overlaid. The entrance is being improved. It's going to be a whole new look on our campus. It's going to be really beautiful. And we'd like to have a ribbon cutting on September 12th. I'm inviting anyone from the board that can attend. And we'll be sending out details on that. But it's going to be really nice. I think they'll finish about August 15th. And it's something that has been needed for a long time. The groundbreaking, we're hoping for our Youth Student Success Center, will also be either later this fall or maybe early in 2023. We're hoping that we can coordinate it maybe for the February meeting, which is also going to be a board meeting on the campus. And where y'all can all be there for that board meeting. And I talked to Ms. Jones about it, and she thought it would be a good idea. So we're going to try to plan for that, for February 10th, board meeting. And not take a whole lot of time, but have something that will work into your schedule, because we'd love to have the board there. The Sparrow Program that many of you have heard about, we have enrolled students for that program. It's for students with developmental disabilities. We're going to be the only program north of Interstate 10. And it's been extremely well-received. We got a community grant from Congresswoman Letlow to support it, and a lot of other grant funding for this program. In fact, it's all being funded by donations and grants. And the students are so excited to be on our campus. And all the other programs are in the Louisiana system. I'm very proud to see that LSU system will now have a program for these students that cannot enroll in normal classes, but they can be on a college campus and get the experience that other students have. We've been trying to get our foot in the door at Fort Polk. Thank y'all for agreeing to the program yesterday. We're going to have a presence on the campus. The LSUA logo will be at Fort Polk, and we'll have a building there. And we're very excited about that. Another university has been doing this program, and we're very glad to be able to assume that leadership. Thank you also for the Campus Edge Project. We hopefully will be coming back to you with a proposal for that. I think it's going to have a significant impact, profound impact, on our campus. Dr. Nelson and I have been working on the Dental Hygiene Program, moving into central Louisiana. We got funding from the legislature to help buy some of the equipment we need. We're remodeling a building downtown, our Allied Health Building. And it's going to be a great partnership with the dental school and LSUA to meet workforce development needs of central Louisiana. And that's really the biggest push that we have, is to really address the workforce development needs. And this is clearly an example of us working across campuses to make that happen. We're doing the same thing with LSU UNICEF, with our Surgical Technology Program. They're going to be coming into our Allied Health Program building downtown as well. They got a grant from the Rapids Foundation to support that. And I tell you, I'm very proud to work with both those chancellors, to be able to tell the community that we can make things happen. And I call it the flagship system, not just the flagship campus, because this is what a flagship system can do. Technology innovation is very important, I think, for all our campuses. I know we got some funding at several universities from the legislature. It looks like it's imminent. We're going to get $500,000 from LED to help us also upgrade our cybersecurity and technology programs on the campus. More to come on that, but it's looking very, very good that we're going to get support for that. And the last thing I'll say is, if things hold up for the predictions for the fall, we'll have the seventh semester in a row with record enrollment. And we're very proud of that. And, you know, the community has very, very much turned to LSUA to be the university of choice. And we've reached out to the high schools and really have connected well with the surrounding parishes and even statewide. So thank y'all for your support and allowing us to continue to grow and thrive at LSUA.
Thank you, Chancellor. And Chancellor Sorenson?
Yes, good morning.
I'd like to start off by thanking you because of the nice rings that you presented in your report.
So I want to thank our president and the board for all of your support, not only for the LSU system, but for LSUE. The gold bags on the dais are for those folks that offered, wanted national championship rings and/or pendants. So I'm happy to say that they finally arrived. And I think they're very attractive. I have mine bling on today. So we're super excited, you know, about that. We are also very happy and energized to report that this has been an historic year for both private and federal and state funding for LSUE. You heard from Mr. Lombardo, Dr. Lombardo, yesterday about the projects. We received that $1 million in cash to help get these more in-depth studies off the ground for athletic facilities. We have the STEAM Innovation Center came in as a P5. We want to turn that into a P1 next year. But this is the first time that LSUE has been involved in such large-scale capital campaigns. So as a result, we have engaged two firms, two consulting firms, to assist us with that. And despite the economy and the challenges, both consultants feel that we have a very positive future forward in raising those private funds to be able to bring forward to the legislature so that those other funds can be released. We have set a $10 million goal for private funding for the STEAM Innovation Center. And we feel that with the right amount of corporate and private kinds of asks, and they're not donations, they're investments, in the future of the campus, we feel that we can realize those goals. As Paul said, we're extremely happy with the collaboration of bringing not only surgical technology, but respiratory care to the Alexandria area. And that Rapids Foundation grant will assist us greatly in doing that. But of course, we're also applying for other sources of rapid-response funding as well. And we had one of the Surgery Centers in Alexandria step up and donate thousands of dollars' worth of equipment to help make that happen. I want to speak a little bit about the Fontenot Foundation, the scholarship that was mentioned yesterday. That is by the Leonard Fontenot family. The really interesting part about that is that's a $100,000 endowment to create a transfer scholarship from LSUE to LSUA in the College of Engineering. Mr. Leonard Fontenot and all three of his sons are LSU engineering graduates. And Bill Fontenot happens to be the CEO of CLECO. So that, I think that was a very profound type of investment, and reinforces the fact that LSUE is also a starting place for many professional careers, pre-med, engineering, dentistry, pharmacy, pre-vet, all of those types of things. And going along with that, I can share with you that our six-year graduation rate for our students, beginning with the 2015 cohort, is over 50%. And that is an astounding number for a two-year college. So that shows you that not only do our students go into the workforce, but our transfer students do persist and graduate at a rate much higher than the national average. So we're very excited about that. I mentioned the two capital campaigns that we have. And we are also running a whole host of summer camps this morning, this summer, everything from athletics, but mostly, most importantly, to enhance the academic teaching and learning of children as young as in the fourth grade for STEM camps, all the way up through what we're calling boot camps, but Bengal Essentials for students that are starting, whether they're fresh out of high school or returning adults. And this will give them a chance to experience some exposure to math and English, digital literacy, as well as those supports that are available to the campus, because we want to wrap our arms around our students and ensure that they make it from day one into graduation. Our director of our library, who also is in charge of our Student Success Center, is putting together a local writers' symposium. And that's the first of its kind for LSUE. So making that connection to the community and recognizing the arts and culture and the talent of the Acadiana area is very, very important for us. So we are still moving along on exploring additional housing for LSUE. We are, I'm working with Patrick Martin. We're working with the developers. They have purchased seven acres across the street from the campus. And so we're still in the stages of getting more stringent kind of demographic data and market projections. But hopefully, we will be coming forward at some point this year for a recommendation to move forward with the building project. We still have, despite the economy and the challenges, we still have, I'm happy to say that we have a waiting list for housing. And it's not, and these are people that have put down a deposit. So it's more than just anecdotal data. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sorenson.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, Chancellor Sorenson, could you address something that I think is very unique, and just a point I'd like her to make, is the number of students at the most recent graduation who were high school graduates also receiving an LSUE degree?
Yes. So dual enrollment is huge in our area. So we had a total of 40 students that graduated with both their high school degree and their associate degree at the same time at our last graduation. And so that is an outstanding accomplishment. We know that dual enrollment is high on the Board of Regents list. And I think, you know, what we have to talk about as a system is the cost of being able to do dual enrollment. And we want it to be lower than the cost. But right now, we're doing it at $50 a credit hour, and that's just not a sustainable rate per credit hour to be able to do it successfully. But dual enrollment is one of the best values in the United States.
Several of these students were receiving a degree from LSUE before they actually received their high school diploma.
Yes, they did.
And these children, students, travel from Iota, St. Landry Parish, Evangeline Parish, Acadia Parish, to LSUE.
And Iberia.
And Iberia to do this coursework. Iberia to UNICEF is quite a haul. So I just wanted to make sure we made that point of the success that we're having with this academy program.
Yes, very. And we also have the highest number of graduates in history, which seems small in comparison to other numbers in computer science. So we were very happy about that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. Dr. LaBord?
Thank you. So we were fortunate with, and very grateful to all the support for our state funding that came through this year. This will allow us to address our priorities of raises for faculty and staff, and to begin some reinvestment into our lab and field equipment with an emphasis on precision agriculture, and to begin to look at, to refill some of the very long vacant positions that we have in cooperative extension service. And last month, we have realigned Louisiana FFA, which was under the College of Agriculture, to report to Dr. Toby Leffley, our program leader for youth development, so that 4H and FFA are now working together on a collaborative basis. Two weeks ago, in Alexandria, we had the State FFA Convention in person with over 1,200 very excited attendees. Next week, 4H University comes to the Baton Rouge campus, and again, we will have closer to 1,500 participants in that program. Our first management development institute is in progress with 21 participants. This is a program we've developed in this past, developed in the last six months, and initiated in January to help assist faculty and staff with advancement opportunities within the LSU system by providing additional training in HR, planning, budgeting, and team-building, other leadership skills that are going on. We were able to sign a memorandum of association with Southern University Ag Center. This new memorandum expands our long-traditional interactions in cooperative extension into the areas of research and teaching. And we have teams working together for initial, to identify our first initiatives in those areas, reporting back on August 15th. We were able to obtain approximately $2 million in federal funding, which we're going to be able to apply towards our equipment needs that we're working there. And the next step in that process is really now to try and engage the agribusiness community, both nationally and within the state, in a way of supporting our Louisiana agricultural experiment stations in a way that we've not had that level of support. Last week, we spent two days in Washington, visiting with the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the Department of Interior. Again, our priorities are increased funding for both equipment and for research grants under the new climates morbid initiative of the National Institute of Food and Agriculture. We actually have two pending collaborations with Southern, one for approximately $2 million, the other for about $24.5 million in research projects. I forgot to mention, from the legislature, we got a member amendment. Thanks to Dr. Agrati in particular, my appreciation to help us with our new Center for Coastal Resiliency that is being developed at La House. Philanthropy is up substantially this year. Our team is doing well. At lunch, just after lunch today, I get to go meet with Klein Kirby. The Kirby family is providing a new endowed professorship in the School of Plant, Environment, and Soil Sciences. Tom Welke, Sarah Lee recently provided- Tom Welke, Sarah Lee recently provided two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding for a new graduate certificate program that we're gonna be doing in, in food supply chain management through LSU online. We've had some important national recognition for our Healthy Communities Program. You'll see that in your, in your Ag Center update. And International Recognition winning the Hospital Award for our International Food Symposium that was conducted in conjunction with Mendel University in Czechoslovakia. I think we, we have active, important collaborations going on right now with LSU E, with LSU A, with the LSU Vet School, with EJ Orso College of Business, and are progressing quite well. Last thing, I'm gonna skip over to the College of Agriculture, just quite pleased to, just the, of, of the Tiger Twelve, four were from the LSU College of Agriculture, and the fifth, and the fifth was from the, for our School of Biological and Agricultural Engineering, which I, which we share jointly with the College of Engineering. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. LaBord. Chancellor Clark?
Thank, thank you very much. I would also like to echo what Chancellor Lewis said to extend appreciation to President Tate for the time that he spent up in Shreveport on Tuesday and Wednesday, but more importantly, for all of the work and then for the team that came with him from the flagship. But I also want to make sure, to recognize as well, the role of the two supervisors who are up in our area, and Supervisors Jones and Brown. No area could be more fortunate to have supervisors with their passion and interest in helping us. And, and Mr. Chair, Mr. Starnes, I would thank you as well for what you have done in your year. It's been noted by the community, it's been noted by our LSU S Foundation Board in particular. And I thank you for that. One of the things that Chancellor Lewis mentioned was that there was a little bit of anxiety on his campus because of talking about bold ideas and what could happen. And that occurred on my campus as well, because one of the aspects of the different possibilities, when you talk about a bold vision, that was mentioned by the President, was the possibility of relocating LSU S to the Health Science Corridor there on King's Highway, which caused some anxiety on our campus, obviously. But, you know, bold ideas, and immediately I said to the Faculty Senate and to Staff Senate and to my leadership team, bold ideas are what need to be on the table for discussion. They're visions. It doesn't mean that that's exactly what's going to happen. I was fortunate in 2013 that my predecessor at LSU S, who was interim, chose to make having the university go for online being something that we would double down and really seek to do. That was very bold at the time. Going back in 2013, online was not what it is today. And to double down, recognizing that our future for face-to-face wasn't very strong, that was a tremendous move that was done. I get credit for, to see that the enrollment went up. But had he not done that, I would have been delayed, I would have done the same thing, but it would have been delayed another year or so before starting it. The opportunity was terrific. And so our campus has shown that they're willing to consider bold. I've gone to the Faculty Senate and talked to them about some ideas. You might not like hearing some of the ideas I've talked about. I've talked about possibly why not merge LSU Health Science and LSU S and have one strong LSU north Louisiana. That was an interesting discussion with Faculty Senate. I said, what about if we move Allied Health from, over on King's Highway onto our campus? Chancellor Lewis did never, gave me a thank you note for that. It wasn't well received on the King's Highway. But in terms of looking at what we do, I'll tell you, status quo is not gonna work on the LSU Shreveport campus. When I left in ninety-four, after thirteen years and having been the business school dean, we had forty-two hundred undergrad students, two hundred and fifty grad students on campus. We're now just a shade under two thousand on-campus students. Now, a number of our undergraduate students are actually in Shreveport taking us online. They choose to do that. And they still come out to the campus, they use the library to do the things. And so in reality, our, on, our total enrollment is, is probably closer to twenty-seven fifty when we, we look at the number by refactoring the number. But the, the reality is, status quo doesn't work, won't work. We have to be talking about bold ideas. And I think that what President Tate talked about with community leaders, what really resonated well, was the idea of co-location. Now, co-location talks about being strategic and what kind of things that we're doing in collaborating that could be done with LSU Health Science campus, and what things are those that we could be over there in presence. I'm all for that. You know, when I came in 2014, some of you heard me say this, the Faculty Senate said my first meeting in August 2014, the colors of blue and gold were told to be changed to purple and gold. And the Faculty Senate voted unanimously that I should go to King Alexander and say, hell no, we don't want our purple and gold, we want blue and gold. And I said, are you kidding me? I went to Lowe's and bought all the purple paint I could buy, and I'm painting everything that was blue purple till they changed their mind again. I love purple and gold. And, and it was critical for us for online that we had purple and gold. And so, again, I think thinking bold is really important. So I think there are things that we can do and co-locate, and the new research building we built, and possibly we're talking about with President Tate and Chancellor Lewis, there might be two floors of that to begin with. There might be more later, there might not. But the fact is, working in together is important. But we've been working in together. But what President Tate has done is come up to really focus that with the community to recognize that. Supervisor Brown was in a meeting this past Monday where we were talking with senior leaders of both of our campuses about some collaborative things, three-one programs, four-two programs, things like that, a new MOU relating to medical school. Those things have been ongoing for some time. I'll tell you that Chancellor Lewis has been terrific. We had some of those conversations with his predecessors that kind of became codicil matters, that kind of went into, we went down the road and we kind of went around and stroked, we came back out, and we didn't have anything. I'm pleased with the things that are continuing to go through and going forward, and those things are really important. So I think that what has happened is that there is a level of communication, a level of discussion that's very positive. President Tate was the catalyst for that. He has worked with some of the legislators who have not been as willing to sit down and talk about what-ifs in a positive way. I think they are now. I thank you, President Tate, for, for the fact of that reality. And I think our campus is prepared to continue to look to say, what might that be? So, again, I, I just follow up on what Chancellor Lewis said, I think that's a good thing. Again, they've heard different ideas of what bold ideas, and they've heard it from me. And so I think I am very pleased to hear that. Again, I mentioned to you that we are working closely together in things that we're gonna be doing. We're focusing the, the mission of the campus, LSU Shreveport, more towards healthcare, health technology that will align. And I think it's very important for students to understand, prospective students to understand those tracks that could be possible. And I could not be happier, in particular with Allied Health that we have to work with, this discussion we've already been having about these joint programs. It's, it's really terrific. Stay tuned, I think we're gonna be able to be a model. President Tate has talked about how important it is for, for Shreveport to have both of the universities there and how we can come together. So I think it'll be interesting to see how we go with that, and I, and I'm very enthusiastic about, and, and look forward to those possibilities. We also have, we're very pleased with what happened in the legislature. President Tate talked about the efforts that were done through the cooperation, collaboration, and again, that happened for us. We are receiving two-point-five million towards cybersecurity. That's a huge infusion for us. President Tate met with GDIT, a company there, while he was up in Shreveport for the two days. And his schedule was a little tremendous. If you're looking to see, I'm not sure how he got through Auburn, could he be so chipper with you the next day back here? But, because it was a lot of discussions. But again, that's a good thing. And the two-point-five million will leverage what we're doing with our cyber collaboratory. Again, things we already had in place, but it'll give us now morbidity to move those things forward, and we're very pleased to have that be possible. So I think that's good news. I believe that there will be good things that will come from that. Finally, I think I might mention, I believe that the Board knows that I am the Chair of the Search Committee for the LSU Health Science Chancellor. We had a second meeting, and again, a second meeting where President Tate was there. There's twenty-two members on the Search Committee. It's assisted by Isaacson Miller. They are an excellent search firm. They have a lot of experience in these kinds of searches. I'm very pleased with the interaction with the Search Committee. We talked about what, how we're gonna be successful, how we can be successful. I appreciate, General Counsel Winston DeCore was there and was, again, very helpful in talking with the committee. I can tell you that as the search firm came back to me, they said, maybe we'd have a meeting again at the Search Committee in late July, mid-August. And I said, no, 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 faster, faster, faster. And so I'm continuing to push them to move more quickly, and I believe that maybe it'll be mid-July for the next meeting that we will have. And I'm very pleased with where we're going with that. So that ends my report, sir.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you for your tremendous work. Thank all of you. I'm very pleased to hear these reports. Jane, you're doing one for Baton Rouge campus?
I'm going to defer to President Tate to provide something for the campus.
Very good. All right. Well, here we go. It was an honor to be here to represent the Baton Rouge campus as well. Just a couple items I'd like to highlight. I mentioned the strategic planning process in my earlier report. That is going on right now at the Baton Rouge campus, but also the system, and with every effort to be collaborative in the process. Visited with some of the folks yesterday. It seems to be going extremely well, lots of wonderful ideas. On the time horizon for that is, in light of Mr. Beager, who's leading that effort, and sort of my anxiousness to get some documents, very short, but hopefully we'll have some great ideas coming out of that effort that will then guide us in our philanthropic endeavors as well as how we work with the faculty here on campus. One of the things I want to highlight there is that, is this is a really more inclusive effort over and above the Pentagon, which was really a legislative effort. This is going to have an opportunity to have a wide range of academic areas represented. I think that's very important. In light of that, that's happening simultaneously, that this year at the Baton Rouge campus, there will be multiple searches for leaders, including law, man ship, agriculture, music, and dramatic arts. So it will be a very busy time in terms of searches to fill positions. You know, when you say that, oftentimes you don't acknowledge that people are serving as interims. This is a really tough job. And I would like to acknowledge all the individuals who are serving in that capacity because they are really being tremendous citizens for us, and I greatly appreciate the leadership. Some of you have participated in the ag trips. We had one scheduled to go to Wisconsin, but Wisconsin is changing Chancellors right now, and they are also gonna be searching for a new leader of their ag program, so we're gonna defer that trip until winter. And those of you who come during the winter to go to Wisconsin, I know you care about ag. I lived there for ten years. It's gotta be tough. It's gotta be tough to go to Wisconsin in the winter, let me tell you. We, we are gonna have some conversations about going to Nebraska because of the work they do related to sort of engineering and mechanisms that are quite robust. And so you may hear more about a trip to Nebraska. Related to that, you know, we're searching for deans and the like, but we also hired a provost since our last meeting. Roy Hagerty will be joining us on August first. And with respect to searches, we are looking for a vice president who will be responsible for the portfolio dealing with civil rights, inclusion, and DNI, and Title IX. We are down to three finalists, and they will be coming in over the next week or so. And hopefully, we will have that search completed by the end of the month or beginning of July, and that person will be joining us, we hope, very soon. I've already acknowledged that Dr. Cassidy has done a great job in that role, and so whoever comes in will have big shoes to fill. Really excited about the research expenditures. They often really, you know, people think it's just about the money, you know, you get research money. No, it really speaks about ideas, and like what new ideas are being manifesting. So received a report most recently that our research expenditures through May thirty-first were about a hundred and eleven million dollars. That's new ideas being tested and the like, and that's an increase over last year. And awards are at about a hundred and forty-three million right now as of May thirty-first. That's really significant, and speaks to the quality of the faculty. And I want to commend our faculty colleagues and also the Office for Research for doing that. Hard work. Related to the Pentagon, some very exciting things. You know, we received money from the legislature to finish the ROTC cyber building. Really thankful for that. I have to, I have to really shout out, I gotta say, Mr. Lipton, I don't want to embarrass you as your dad, but he really was a champion for giving us that two million dollars. I mean, he, he fought like the Dickens for us, and I appreciate that. We're gonna be able to build that out. And aligned with that, recruiting a cybersecurity faculty member is harder than getting a five-star quarterback. First of, well, no offense to five-star quarterbacks, but, you know, they're eighteen years old. These are really mature professionals who can go anywhere, and they have demonstrated that they have funding history. We were able to secure two new colleagues to join us in the cyber area this year who already are funded. One is a National Security Designated Scholar. This is a huge deal to happen, because we just announced we were going this route this year, and to get two to buy in, and a lot of it had to do with the fact that we messaged this, that we had a building that they could see, and they believed that there was gonna be a real big future for cyber, and I'm, I could not be more excited. We need to model that in all of our areas as the strategic plan unfolds so that we can continue to secure great faculty as well as support the ones we have. And finally, I'd like to say, this graduation was really special. It was a record graduation in terms of the number of graduates. It broke the spring record. It also broke records across demographic groups, females, African-Americans, Native American students. It, it was just quite, quite a deal. And it speaks to the quality of the faculty, working with students across a wide swath of demographic backgrounds to secure a degree. I could not be more excited for us, and it speaks to the future because our enrollment management strategy has put us in a position to secure students from everywhere. Sixty-one parishes were represented, all fifty states, over sixty countries in this graduation. That's what LSU is, and really excited about the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to all the Chancellors. The next item is approval of committee recommendations. Yesterday, the Committee of Risk Management met, but we did not have a quorum. Today, I'm asking the Board to approve the items that were on that committee's agenda. I'll accept a motion to, to accept all the committee recommendations from today's committee meetings, or yesterday's committee meetings, as well as fiscal year 2023 audit plan and the fiscal year 22 third quarter audit summary.
So moved?
Moved. Moved by Supervisor Armitor, second by Supervisor Zuschla. That objection, those reports are adopted. The next item is the Chair's report. Dr. Drati?
So, last night, we had a dinner at the Engineering School, and I think Josh Duchesne is here, and thank you for arranging that and for hosting us. It was a fantastic event. We got supervisors got to tour our wonderful facility there, over four hundred thousand square feet of engineering space, and it's very exciting to see the things that are done there. We also got a chance to visit with Dr. Drati, who is going to transition from his role as Executive Director of the Board of Supervisors to a role in the Office of the President. And to that, I have a resolution.
Did you draft it?
I did not. I could have drafted it.
He meant that Jason drafted it.
The problem is who's gonna draft him from here?
Sir, that's right. Whereas Dr. Jason James Drati was selected by the LSU Board of Supervisors as its Executive Director in July 2017. Whereas since that time, he has tirelessly served the Board and LSU, responding to the call of duty on weekends, holidays, and all hours of the day and night, to ensure that the Board received all the detailed history and context necessary to make informed decisions. all the detailed history and context necessary to make informed decisions. Whereas in current fashion, Dr. Drotti has also served the university by holding multiple positions during times of high need, including Chief of Staff, Associate Vice President of Government Relations, and Interim Vice President of Strategic Communications. Whereas using his multiple LSU degrees, a Bachelor's in History, a Master's in Public Administration, and a Doctor in Higher Education Administration, he has served the members of, members by providing a wealth of knowledge about the history, policy, organization, and evolution of higher education in general, and LSU specifically. Whereas Dr. Drotti provided members with steadfast guidance, extensive support, and thorough understanding of Board governance, policies, and procedures. Whereas there has never been an issue, situation, or crisis that Dr. Drotti stepped away from service and duty to LSU. Whereas with more than twenty-three years of service to LSU, he has demonstrated exceptional loyalty, dedication to LSU, and all eight of her campuses. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board does hereby extend its deepest thanks to Dr. Drotti, his wife Annette, and two sons, Ryan and Jacob. Congratulate him on his new position as LSU's Vice President for Public Policy, while wishing him success in this new and crucial role. So thank you, uh, e, everyone. Uh, I was encouraged by the Chancellor's report, um, and one theme I, I got from many of the reports was the no, notion of collaboration. I heard a lot of Chancellors speaking about working with other Chancellors from the uni, uh, other campuses in our system, and it's very encouraging. It's this type of attitude and culture, and I want to thank the President for basically creating that, of collaboration that's going to lead us where we want to go, and that's to achieve NCI designation. Um, I can't stress in how important that is. Um, it's, it would be transformative for LSU, transformative for Louisiana, in outcomes, health outcomes, in economic impact, and prestige, and, uh, quality of our university. Um, we cannot be deterred from achieving that goal. It's going to take a lot of resources, a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of collaboration, all of us, to get there. Um, and I thank the President for setting the course, but we have to do the work along with him, and I want to thank the Chancellors for being a, uh, participants in that. NCI designation's important. It's the most important thing. There are other areas where we can also be the best in the world and have exciting opportunities for research and influx of grant monies and other things. Uh, I believe, uh, the progress we've made at Pennington, the, um, the pursuit of that, uh, federal grant money for super-obesity clinic is amongst them. I know I participated in a, in that presentation, uh, in effort to get that. I, I heard your report, Dr. Kerwin, about the, the, uh, the answer, we're going to get the answer in September about that. I'm very hopeful that we get a good response. I think that the opportunity for results, in terms of health outcomes, and, and research opportunities, we'll do those things that we talked about, NCI designation, in terms of increased federal monies and increased, uh, um, prestige to the university. And I appreciate that effort. And, um, also in that vein, I met, um, this past week at fif, fifteen forty-two Tulane in New Orleans, um, with Doctors Morrison, Scharf, and several others, about other projects. Um, and I want to thank Dr. Nelson for making that available to us, and to talk about, um, ways we can, um, transform the criminal justice system, but also, um, enormous research opportunities for LSU. And I believe it will also be something that could be a magnet for federal funds and, uh, prestige to the university and better outcomes, better results. So I want to thank you for that, too. Um, I'm also encouraged by the Title IX report. Um, one of the things that we were adamant about was that we were going to implement all of the Hush Blackwell recommendations. I think we've done that. Um, obviously, there's that one that the Board of Regents still has to complete, but we've done, um, what we said we were going to do, and I'm very proud of that. Thank you, Dr. Cassidy, for your award-winning service, um, to that effort. Um, it is important. Um, I mentioned that along with the other areas, because I want to be the best in the world at that, too. We want to develop models that lead the way in reporting, compliance, and, most importantly, in, um, uh, creating a healthy and safe environment for our students, faculty, and staff. Well, thank you for, for, uh, taking that effort on. Um, we did have a marvelous legislative session, with great results for LSU. I want to thank the President for that, his efforts. Um, and I also want to thank Supervisor Mallett, who I appointed Chair of Government Relations. He, um, very, um, passionately took on the effort, and he led the way in forging new and different relationships with legislators, with, uh, the Legislature, and other friends of LSU, um, to appropriate the monies that were appropriated, and to, uh, maybe help understand what we do around here. Um, Chief Amongst the People that helped us was Governor John Bell Edwards. He hosted an event at the Governor's Mansion for us. He attended. He also attended other events for LSU, um, during this legislative ses, session. I want to publicly thank him for his efforts in that regard. Um, I also want to thank Lieutenant Governor Billy Nungesser, who offered his apartment, the Lieutenant Governor's apartment, uh, near the Capitol at the Pentagon barracks, so that we could have host events and interact with legislators and others, um, as an opportunity to showcase each of the LSU campuses, and to, um, help, uh, decision-makers better understand why it's important to invest in LSU. And so I want to thank Lieutenant, Lieutenant Governor Nungesser for that. Um, and he, uh, even attended one of those events, so I want to thank you for that, too. He also called me, and, uh, and I had an opportunity to thank him for, he, he, uh, took fifteen million dollars from his budget to help fund faculty pay raises at LSU, and, um, I want to publicly thank him for that, too. It's very important. It's a, it's a big win for LSU. Uh, it's a, it's very important to our, to recruit and retain faculty, um, that we, they, um, be compensated and, uh, appropriately, and that's certainly going to help. So I want to thank him for that as well. Um, the, you know, it's not that every day that I get to, um, see someone get their dream job, but I think we've done that. And, uh, I want to welcome, uh, Dr. Monique Kane to, uh, as the new Executive Director to the Board of Supervisors. Um, Dr. Kane, um, has multiple LSU degrees, including the, uh, PhD in Higher Education Administration, and, um, I'm looking very much forward to working with her, and as all the supervisors do, um, and, uh, doing the important work that we need done around LSU in Louisiana. So thank you for being on board and welcome. Um, with that, I want to, um, thank all of you again for being here, um, and for collaborating with us. Um, it's very, uh, I'm very encouraged and heartened by what I've seen, um, at the legislative session, the collaboration with the, uh, Chancellors, and with the leadership of the President, and I'd like to see all of that grow and continue. So with that, that concludes my remarks, and, um, we are at the end of the agenda, so I will accept a motion to adjourn. So moved by Supervisor Zuschlag? Without objection, we are adjourned.